Would it start up here?
It's on. I did it already.
Okay. So it's click one of the options.
Yeah, that's okay. But you're okay.
We're on?
Yeah, we're done in ten minutes, ten seconds.
I'd like to call this commission meeting to order. And any changes to the agenda?
No agenda changes.
There's a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion second.
Motion second to adopt the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Need approval or any corrections to the minutes of January the 26th, 2012?
Motion second.
Motion second to approve the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are now official. Council members. Councilman Dymond, do you want to speak now? You're on the way?
I'll wait.
Okay. Who else we got? Lionel Matthews.
Lionel Matthews.
Counselman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. How are you doing this afternoon? My name is Lionel Matthews. I'm the council representative for the first district. And I'm here to speak on item number five on your agenda, Northside Station. With this particular project, I wasn't the elected council member when this PUD was approved. It was approved by the previous or under the previous council member, Representative Brenda Gilmore. And I may get the year wrong, but this was originally approved in maybe 2003, I believe. 2007? 2007. And it was approved as a planned unit development. The proposal before you now amends that PUD that was originally approved is going to change some of the terminology used in units or in the types of units that will be developed. I believe in the original PUD, there were eight duplexes, I want to say maybe eighteen or sixteen cottage homes. And Ms. Bernhardt, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that. And the rest were to be townhomes. This is going to call for less cottage homes and more townhomes on the amendment. And then there were some amendments to the layout of the project, especially there was concerns with public works to open up the dead ends that were located in the original PUD that was presented and approved. I don't think, and this is an area that I grew up in, those are some of the facts of this. I grew up in District One. This is an area that I've lived in for, since I was thirteen. My parents moved in this area. We owned two homes in that area. I bought a home. I actually left, went to college. I've lived in Hermitage, Bellevue. I lived in, off Bradley Parkway, by the airport. I lived all over this county. And I'd made the decision to move back to the district I was raised in and ultimately made the decision to run for council and represent that district. And I'm not sure that there are too many council members that could say that they represent a district that they grew up in and that they have ties to since they were younger, but I'm proud to say that. I also say that because I'm very interested in making sure that going forward, my district grows and develops in a way that's going to be appealing to young people to call that area home, especially those that may have lived there, moved away, and may be looking to move back to either the city of Nashville after college or maybe looking to just settle down, start a family. I want them to be able to look at District One. I want them to be able to look at the north part of Nashville and say that this is a place that's growing. It is a place that's going to be beautiful. I look at District One as a very untapped canvas. It's a canvas that can be painted and it could be just as beautiful as any other area such as East Nashville, Bellme, Green Hills. And it has very much potential to be all of those places. But it has to be a place that everyone can be proud of that lives there now and for the future people that will move to that area. It has to be an area that's appealing, both appealing. This planned unit development was approved, like I said, before I was elected to council. So there has to be some merit of to why it was approved at that point. I think that this project, which actually, there was interest when I first got into council of developing this. This was right around the time that the housing market fell out. So there was a hard time getting the original PUD financed and getting it off the ground, rightfully so. But in the economy, where we see the economy turning around, where we see banks starting to finance projects all around the city, we have to look and say, where's the development in our area? And this could be the thing that sparks that development. It needs to be done right. I believe that there have been several conditions placed on the approval of this through the recommendation of the staff. And I tend to lean on their expertise in looking and planning for our city. And I think with those said conditions that have been placed on the approval of this or the recommended approval of this, I think this can be a great project going forward. I will ask that the developers come and they speak with the neighborhood groups in the area that will be affected by this because this is not something that will go to council. This is not a zone change that has to go to council. This is simply amending the PUD. So I will ask, and I know that there are some time constraints with the financing, and I'll let the developers speak to that. But I think that they do need to speak with the community. They need to talk to the community and they need to make the community aware of what their intentions are coming into the community, just to be good neighbors. With that said, I don't have a decision in what happens with this PUD. That lies on the commission. But I will ask you all to think about the future growth of this city and specifically the northwest Nashville area, which I represent a large portion of, and in making a decision about that, make the best decision that will build our city in a way that we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other councilmen in the audience that I've overlooked? And any items to be deferred or withdrawn?
We have one item requested to be withdrawn. That's item number two on page four. It's a text amendment regarding signs, specifically tri-faced billboards. And it's a request to amend the zoning code to prohibit the conversion of non-conforming static billboards to tri-faced billboards. And the applicant has requested that this be withdrawn and it will be replaced by a more finely crafted bill. And one item to be deferred, item number six on page five, Beaumont Place resubdivision. It's a request for final plat approval to create two lots on property at 215 Manchester Avenue. And the applicant has requested a two-meeting deferral until March 8th. And that's the end of the withdrawals and deferrals.
Been a request for items two and six to be deferred. Motion to do so?
To withdraw.
Yeah, excuse me. Item two's withdrawn, item six to be deferred. Is there a motion?
Motion second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Items on consent.
Before we move to the consent agenda, let me give the audience this information. If you're not satisfied with the decision made by the planning commission today, you may appeal that decision by petitioning for a writ assert with the Davidson County Chancery Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within sixty days of the date of the entry of the planning commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. And then moving on to our consent agenda, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. There'll be no individual public hearings nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or a member of the commission requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. So the following two items are proposed for your consent agenda today. Item number three on page four, Old Hickory Commons. It's a request to revise the preliminary plan and for final approval for a portion of the Old Hickory Commons residential planned unit development located on various properties along Spruce Dale Drive between Beaver Creek Way and Saddle Creek Way to permit twenty-three detached multifamily units where forty-seven attached multifamily units were previously approved. Staff recommends approval of the PUD revision and the final PUD with conditions, including all of the public works conditions. And the public works conditions are at your places. Then item number four on page five, non-conforming uses and structures in the face of natural disasters. This is a request to amend the zoning code regarding the period of inactivity for non-conforming uses and non-conforming structures that have been damaged by a natural disaster or event where persons or businesses receive major disaster assistance from the federal or state government. And staff recommends approval of this text amendment with its own amendments. And that's the end of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ann. Items three and four have been requested of the staff to be on consent. Is there a motion to that or any comments from any commissioners?
Motion second.
Motion second to approve these on consent. Items three and four, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those are now officially approved. For the sake of the audience, the items that'll be on public hearing today would be items one, A, and B, and item five. All the rest of it have been taken care of as far as public hearing goes.
Good afternoon. I forgot my glasses. Okay, so the first item that you're going to hear today is the plan amendment request of the Antioch Presulate Community Plan.
Both of them together, but vote on second.
This plan amendment request is located in the Antioch Presulate Community in the southeast Davidson County. The applicant's request is to amend the land use policy from residential low-medium density policy to T3 suburban neighborhood evolving policy and also conservation policy. So this is a map of the area and the policy as it is applied today. This is the property in purple. And the policy that exists today is RLM, residential low-medium density. It allows single and two-family housing densities between two and four dwelling units per acre. And then this is Murfreesboro Pike, which is retail, commercial, and super community. And so it allows just a mixture of different commercial and mixed uses. The applicant's request is T3 suburban neighborhood evolving. T3 neighborhood evolving allows a mixture of housing types, including stacked flats or that's usually in the form of multifamily housing or townhomes at densities up to twenty dwelling units per acre and even some open space. And the conservation policy is a place to preserve and remediate any environmentally sensitive features, so steep slopes and in this case, there's a stream on the front of the property. The applicant is requesting to also change the zoning on the property to allow for assisted living, total of seventy units, which would equate to, for assisted living, about two-hundred-and-ten beds at a density of seven-point-nine dwelling units per acre. The applicant is also proposing open space in that conservation area and a pedestrian path along Yuna-Antioch Pike. So in looking at the application, the staff evaluated a couple of things, first being the land, excuse me, the land use that's being proposed. So the land use is an assisted living is what's being proposed. And in the Antioch community, there is somewhat of a lack of assisted living facilities. The couple that you see here are just kind of hospice type uses, home for the ages or nursing homes, but there aren't very many assisted living facilities. There is one being constructed on Murfreesboro Pike, but the thing to keep in mind here is that it is being constructed directly on Murfreesboro Pike. Even though assisted living may be an appropriate use, it may not be appropriate for this site necessarily because it is disconnected from the services on Murfreesboro Pike. Looking at access to the site, the site is on Yuna-Antioch Pike. Right now, there is no direct access into the site. Oak Barrel Drive is a local street that stubs out at the site. It was anticipated that Oak Barrel Drive was to continue into the site and to continue the single and two-family that is existing on Oak Barrel Drive. And also to be noted, there are no pedestrian connections from the site to Murfreesboro Pike at this time. In terms of environmental conditions on the site, there are some steep slopes in this location and there is a stream that runs right across the front of the site. The development proposal is proposing to place all of the development in this area. However, there is still some, this is basically a hill in this area, and so there may be some excessive grading on the site associated with this development. So before amending the policy from a less intense policy to a more intense policy, staff considered the following. So the land use, is the land use appropriate in this location? Is the access provided appropriate in this location? The environmental conditions? What will be the, you know, the level of disturbance on the site? And then the building form and intensity of development? How will it impact the surrounding land uses? And also the community input, because there was a community meeting held when this application was first brought forward. So with regard to land use, again, assisted living, you know, is an appropriate land use. It provides a mixture of housing and it provides an opportunity for people to age in place in their community. However, it may not be appropriate for this site location. Assisted living is similar in fashion to multifamily and with that land use, you always want to be connected to goods and services as much as possible. This site has more of a physical connection to the single-family residential in this area and it really is topographically separated from the commercial and mixed uses along Murfreesboro Pike. So there is really no relation to Murfreesboro Pike from, you know, from this site. Access in this location, again, Oak Barrel Drive was a local street that stubbed out in this area. And with this access that's being taken from Yuna-Antioch Pike, you're having to cross the stream in this location. So with any intense development, it was recommended to not have this access to the assisted living because of the potential for trucks and deliveries that could negatively impact this street. And so the intent here was with that policy was to continue this lower-density residential development onto the site. Similarly, with the environmental conditions, while the site or the design of the site is staying out of the environmentally sensitive areas, there is going to be quite a bit of impact and excessive grading on the site in this area. The plan is showing a twenty-five-foot retaining wall in here to place the building. So there's going to be some excessive grading there. Building form and intensity, the building is proposed to be three stories in height. And so with the mass and the height of this building, there may be some issues with how this use transitions to these smaller, single-family residential homes adjacent to it. With community input, we did help hold a community meeting. There are about twenty-one people, you know, present. And they did say that they would, you know, like to see assisted living. However, they were uncomfortable with anything, they were uncomfortable with more intense policies in these areas. So while assisted living may be appropriate, it just may not be appropriate for this site. So in conclusion, the land use does require better connections to nearby services. Access to the site does impact a stream and environmental features. Massing and scale of the proposed building would result in some excessive grading on the site. And then the height of the building, in addition to its massing and scale, it just does not provide an appropriate transition to the single-family development. And so the T3 neighborhood evolving policy would be inappropriate to apply at this time. The applicant is also requesting conservation policy, but since staff is giving a comprehensive recommendation in this case, the conservation policy would not be applied at this time, but it may be appropriate to apply in the future. So staff recommends disapproval.
I'm going to present the SP portion of this. The specific request, Tiffany went through a lot of the requests, but I'll just hit some additional points on policy in the SP. The request is for nursing home and assisted facility, and assisted living uses, seventy units overall. Staff recommends disapproval. This site is located about, and here's a zoomed-out area, this site is located about a half-mile south of the intersection of Murfreesboro Pike and Yuna-Antioch Pike. And you can see that from that intersection, both streets start to take on some different characters as they move to the south. Murfreesboro Pike takes on a commercial character with some larger commercial uses along with some smaller storefront uses along its frontage with parking. And Yuna-Antioch takes on a more single-family residential character as it moves to the south. And you can see the same pattern in the zoning of the surrounding area. Much of the surrounding land along Murfreesboro Pike is within commercial PUD. And the adjacent property immediately to the north of this, of this zone change request is in a multifamily residential PUD. And it's important to note that access from that multifamily PUD takes access from Murfreesboro Pike to the east and not from Yuna-Antioch Pike. The zoning for the site is R10, which is a residential zoning district, which is similar to the zoning of the residential areas to the, to the south and to the west. And again, here's a policy slide. The policy follows a similar pattern with the retail concentration policy along Murfreesboro Pike. And RLM residential low-medium policy to the west. And residential low-medium policy has a recommended density of up to four units an acre. And as Tiffany described, the T3 neighborhood evolving, which is requested for the site, would recommend a density of up to twenty dwelling units per acre. And this proposed policy isn't appropriate due to the site's strong connection to the adjacent residential policy and its relatively weak connection to the commercial policy. Here's an area, and this brings us to an area showing the steep slopes on the site and in the surrounding area. The areas in red are the steepest slopes with, that are greater than twenty-five percent. This property may appear to be a transition area between the residential and commercial policies, but this property is separated from the commercial policy to the east topographically by steep slopes. And here's a zoomed-in, here's just a clipping of the steep slopes just surrounding the property. And the boundary line between the commercial and residential policies basically follows this line of steep slopes. And these slopes also sever street connections and driveway connections between the site and the commercial policy. And the site is linked more closely, and because of these steep slopes, the site is linked more closely in topography to the residential neighborhood to the south. And this brings us to the site plan. Again, the proposal is for assisted living and nursing with a maximum of seventy units. Access is proposed through driveway from Yuna-Antioch Pike. The proposed density is just under eight dwelling units per acre, which is, which is about twice the recommended density of the existing RLM policy. And this consistency with the current policy is the reason for the policy amendment. In addition to the steep slopes surrounding the site to the north and to the east, there's a stream running along the Yuna-Antioch street frontage. And the implications of these environmental features with the proposed density is the basis of the staff disapproval for the SP. Because of these environmental features, development has to be concentrated in the southeast portion of the site, on a relatively small portion of the site adjacent to the residential neighborhood to the south, which is where the applicant in this case has shown the building and the parking footprint. And the need to accommodate all of this density in one corner of the site will result in a development that is significantly larger in scale than the adjacent residential neighborhood to the south. And here are the relative footprints of the single-family homes to the south. And you can see the difference in scale with the proposed building. And the slope of the site shown in this plan will also result in, the site plan also shows a possible twenty-foot tall retaining wall along the northern end of, edge of the proposed development. A twenty-foot retaining wall that would have to be placed in there to mitigate for the change in slope to the north of the property. And the proposed higher density has also led to a proposed connection to Yuna-Antioch Pike through that driveway, which would require a stream crossing. Development under the current RLM policy at two to four dwelling units an acre would be more likely, or would be more likely to be of similar size to the adjacent neighborhood and could more easily be, could more easily use the existing stub street to the south from Oak Barrel Drive and wouldn't have, might not have to take that driveway connection across the stream to Yuna-Antioch Pike. And to summarize, disapproval is recommended for the policy and the SP because the location and the topography of the site has a stronger relationship to the single-family residential policy to the south and to the west along Yuna-Antioch Pike than to the non-residential policy along Murfreesboro Pike. And the implications of this policy on the site are illustrated through the concentration of density on the relatively small portion of the site, significant grading of the site to accommodate the increased density, an incompatible building scale adjacent to a residential neighborhood, and the need to provide this stream crossing from Yuna-Antioch instead of accessing the site through Oak Barrel Drive. Residential development on this site of a lower density consistent with the current RLM policy could be more compatible with the, in size with the adjacent residential neighborhood and could be accommodated on the site with less grading to the existing topography and could utilize the existing stub street instead of a stream crossing. And staff recommends disapproval of the SP.
Thank you. This item is open for public hearing. The applicant will be given, Counselman Yeo will speak first.
If I'll start this off, I just wanted, I'm Dwayne Diamond, Councilmember for District Twenty-Eight. I'll start with the first issue. It's item one A. That's the community plan change. I would recommend approval of that with a condition, and that is that it be tied to a specific zoning plan that addresses the concerns of the community. I don't think it'd be wise to change that community plan without that control mechanism of the SP zoning plan. That stated, the item one B, there have been three community meetings on this issue. We started off before the planning commission had one. There was a community involved. We met with the applicant and discussed the possibility of what they were proposing. Originally, they had recommended apartments. And I think planning staff learned at that public meeting that they held that apartments were not something that was desirable within the community, primarily because there's so many within the South Police Precinct. There's over one-hundred-and-forty-five apartment units in that precinct. And there's a concern there. We have higher density with multi-unit structures right behind this. At least it's shown on the map, but there are no buildings there right now. It's approved. There's a really nice conduit crop standing there, but there's no buildings. But that's approved under the current zone, under the plot just to the north of this property. I'm asking for approval because of some community concerns. And you'll hear this, depending on who speaks, some of the concern that's been brought up is the inadequate infrastructure within the community. The Yuna-Antioch Pike is a two-lane road. It's heavily traveled. There's a lot of cars there now and what's currently approved could generate more road trips than what's being proposed with this plan. So that's one reason I recommend that because it improves that infrastructure issue because it doesn't put as many road trips on there. Plus, they're going to widen Yuna-Antioch Pike in front of their property along with putting in curbs and gutters along that property. So we have three lanes in that area. Assisted living does not impact negatively our schools, which are, have consistently been overcrowded in the community. It is a need, the assisted living is a need based on input I've received from campaigns, from public meetings of residents desiring assisted living and nursing home opportunities within southeast Davidson County. So it's a specifically stated interest from a number of residents. The other issue that I have is there's concerns about blasting. They've indicated they're going to be doing grading. That would require some blasting, most likely because, as you know, we live in middle Tennessee and everything's on a base of limestone. They've agreed, the applicant has agreed to do a six-hundred-foot pre-blast survey from the property line to begin to address that. There's also been some residents asked about that, and hopefully that will address those concerns because that's a huge concern in the area. But now, I would prefer the entrance not be where it's indicated on this map, but be at the intersection of Piccadilly Row. But I know staff do not desire that because of the steep slopes just above the stream. And there's a sensitive slope there. I have to deal with the sensitivity of the residents and they have to deal with the sensitivity of the land. But I would prefer it be at that intersection, but we'll fight about that on another. That's not something y'all are going to have to decide, I don't guess, but that's a personal thing with staff and I. But I think that as it is right now, the community overwhelmingly has changed from being in opposition to the plan to supporting the plan. And I ask for your approval, and I'll allow the applicant to present their data. And I ask for your approval, um, and I'll allow the applicant to present their data. And if should I have any questions, I'll be glad to come back and answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. The applicant will have 10 minutes to make their presentation. Since you're not familiar with the procedure here, you'd be allowed to keep two minutes back for reserve for rebuttal if you, if you care to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can we find out if there's any opposition, so I know if I need, in fact, the rebuttal?
I think there's a couple of people that stand up against that, two of the group.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I can reserve two minutes. Uh, my name is Tom White. I'm an attorney with Tunan Trican &amp; White, represent the applicant in this matter. At the front end, I want to thank Councilman Dominey for the time that he's given for these neighborhood meetings, as he's indicated there were three. Uh, and at the outset, it became relatively clear that, uh, the neighbors in this area were very vocal about what they did or didn't want on this site. Uh, and I think, as the staff will confirm, even the councilman has, after each meeting, my client basically revisited the different concerns and came up with a, a plan that eventually the councilman feels like and has told you is supported by virtually all of the community, although we don't profess to have unanimity. Uh, with that said, Joe Epps is the engineer who can also, uh, answer questions about specific what has been, uh, proposed with this plan. At the outset, I'll make the comment, if you read through the staff's recommendation, both with respect to the policy change, uh, and then the SP plan, it almost sounds in most respects like there's a recommendation of approval. If you read their comments and then see how we've addressed those, uh, I think, uh, it's pretty obvious that the client's done what has been requested. As an example, under the conclusion, under the policy issue, it indicates from the staff that the applicability of this policy could be appropriate where a mixture of housing types are placed to function together with street and pedestrian connections. And basically, our plan does exactly that. It provides for an assisted living facility with street and pedestrian connections to Unit Antioch Pike. The facility also is placed on the most developable part of the site. Uh, I mean, there were a lot of concerns environmentally about, you gotta be sensitive to the stream, be sensitive to the slopes. That's exactly what they did. They put the facility on the part of the property, which is where the staff would clearly recommend that it be. Uh, with respect to other matters, they indicate that, uh, quote, "The policy accommodates the density range generally needed for an assisted living facility." Once again, we continue to reduce the density on the property to the point where the staff can curse. We're within the, the density that they would suggest. They also assist that, or excuse me, insist that the application of this policy, uh, would take into account, quote, "All the existing environmental features and topography within the site." I don't know how else we could do that. Uh, you look at this piece of property, you see where it is, you've got the stream, uh, you've got the topo issues, and again, they've done the, the designation of the site exactly where it's reflected. I don't know where else you could put it, uh, on the facility. With respect to land uses, as you saw the maps that were presented by the staff, uh, there's clearly commercial and residential right down this V, as you saw. It may split up there at the V, but you can see that there is commercial and residential. In my opinion, it is a good transition from single-family, uh, to this particular use and then commercial. Uh, I think it's at that V or the vortex, as you saw the different maps. Would also mention that, uh, it talks about, uh, the impact on the lower-density, single-family neighborhood. One of the things that took place was, as you see here on Oak Barrel Drive, there was significant opposition from the neighbors. They didn't want access coming through that site. My client responded at one of these three meetings. They listened to that. They did exactly what the neighbors requested. The neighbors living there in the red boxed areas you see were very adamant, they didn't want the access to the site. We would've put it in there. We were willing to do it, but we listened to the neighbors and accommodated that in our plan. Uh, and that's something the staff has mentioned, that primary vehicle access on Unit Antioch and secondary or emergency access on Oak Barrel Drive. The neighbors didn't want it. They were adamant they didn't want it. So we re-tailored the plan. Uh, in addition, the staff makes a comment about pedestrian facilities to provide better access. Uh, our plan clearly addresses, our proposal would provide pedestrian access from the site to Unit Antioch Pike. There would be a sidewalk along the frontage of the site to the existing red light at the intersection of Unit Antioch and Piccadilly. Uh, you really can't tie in, as the councilman had mentioned, across from Piccadilly. If you look at the site, you can see that it's basically, uh, it's, it would be a destruction environmentally to come straight across on Piccadilly, come across the stream, slaughter those slopes, and then come down to the only building site that they recommend. That would hardly be good planning. Now, the councilman has also mentioned, uh, in a communication, that he has suggested some conditions if it were approved. And I want to mention this. The first one is widening Unit Antioch Pike to three lanes in front of the property. It's not in any report. My client would agree to do that. We've dealt with public works, have generally accepted their conditions, but we would specifically agree that we would do the widening of Unit Antioch Pike to three lanes in front of the property with curb and gutter on the side facing our property. Number two, the councilman has asked, although it's not required under the state law, or basically wouldn't be a requirement to staff, that there be a pre-blast survey. Normally, you do pre-blast surveys from the site of the blasting itself. We've told the councilman, we'd do it for everything within 600 feet of the property line of the property, the entire nine acres. We'd go way beyond, uh, what's required. And, and again, that's not a mandate. It's something my client offered as a result of the concerns about blasting in the neighborhood. There's a third condition. The councilman said that he wanted to have additional landscaping buffer along the property line at the end of Oak Barrel Drive. And that was one more, uh, issue that the neighbors there were very concerned about. Uh, we've committed to do that, and that would be a subjective call. We can't sit here and define the landscaping, except to say that we would commit to the councilman dictating the landscaping along that border of the property that faces Oak Barrel. We can't do any more than that. We don't have a plan that's got trees and densities. Uh, we can just say, we've heard from the councilman, he wants additional densities there. We would let him sign off on that, uh, basically a subjective call by him. And one of the meetings that we had in trying to get this resolved, I think, I think it's relatively clear that as we came through the neighborhood meetings, we adopted everything we thought we could realistically do on the site. And again, it's our insistence that it's clearly in a transition area, uh, from some of the single-family to our assisted living to some of the commercial over there on Murfreesboro Road. Having said that, as we accommodate these different requests, one of the items that I think the staff at the planning department had a problem with was, can you identify the end user on the site? We're going to rezone this under your request for assisted living. Do you know who the operator's going to be? And we struggled with it. This matter's been deferred a couple of times. We continue to try to, uh, take into account the different requests, neighbors and the staff. And we've responded to the staff. We looked for about 45 days. We've not been able to nail down the end user for this proposal. We'd love to, uh, but we're willing to rezone the property, go at it like that, and it's our obligation, obviously, to get an end user to the table. I wish we could tell you right now it's a certain company. We can't. But we deferred at least once to see if we could get that addressed, so there could be specificity evenness to the user. But absent that, I think I can stand before you and tell you, virtually everything we heard from the neighbors has been accommodated in this plan. And we started with multifamily. We started with a number of different uses on the site. And as we came through the neighborhood meetings, again, there's not unanimity, but there's very close to universal support for the plan that we've submitted, which is why the councilman who started out in opposition is now supportive. Uh, again, I appreciate your courtesies. If we could identify an end user, we would, but it's like polling a permit for a house. Oftentimes, you don't know who's going to buy the house, uh, but it doesn't change the fact that it's a good use and it's a good proposal. This is a challenged site, environmentally, topographically, uh, and there's very little place where you could put a good use on it. This is the place for it. It's a good use. We respectfully appreciate your consideration. If there's approval, we would request it with the three conditions that the councilman has asked and we've agreed to here today. Thank you for your courtesies.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Come to the microphone. You'd be allowed two minutes.
Hi, my name's Les Capam, and I've lived in Antioch around 20 years. My mom, most of my family's passed away from here. Uh, when my mom got sick, you know, I looked for a nursing home for her for a long time. Had to go all the way on the other side of Nashville, on northeast side. These facilities are finally starting popping up, and it'll be good for us for, you know, because I'm getting old too. I'm going to need a nursing home sooner or later. But the whole thing of it is, I don't want to go somewhere strange. I want to stay here where, you know, my neighborhood, where I know everybody. But, um, you know, I just think it's great for, you know, that purpose and that one, because I know it, it was hard on me to go see my mom, you know, 10 miles away, because, you know, working. You know, I mean, it'd been five minutes if I was here, I could see her more often. But, um, these are the things that we really want to think about, you know, because it's going to be, it was an impact to me, and someday it might be an impact to you guys. So, that's all I want to say.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Danny Bradbury. I live in the community, been in the community for six years.
Be close to the microphone a little bit closer.
Oh, I'm sorry. I've been in the community for six years, and I think this project, I know about the project, I think it'd be an asset for the community. So I'm, I'm for it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
My name's Janet Murray. I live in the red box right next to the proposed Middle Downs. Um, I'm opposed to this for several reasons. Um, one, the plan does not fit into the residential area that you're injecting, this is still a commercial building that has no business being built in a residential area. The other thing is water retention in an area, um, as proposed, will endanger the areas to the lower, the lower elevation due to the underground water issues that are already there, as, uh, Oak Barrel Drive has a spring in the middle of it, um, that has still not been resolved. The spring is leaking. We basically have a creek that we have to cross to get to our driveway every day. Um, so that's number two. Number three is the blasting. Um, my home is built on the same slab that you guys would be blasting to, to take care of this. And, um, so I see, foresee danger to my house due to the blasting. I know that they said that they would take pictures. However, my finished basement, right now, if you took pictures, you're not going to see any issues, um, down the road, because you'd have to unfinish the finished basement to see the cracking and the possible spring that could come out from under my house. This third, fourth thing is noise abatement. Um, I think last I heard was pine trees or something to, you know, protect the noise. I mean, really, seriously, pine trees? But anyway, um, I don't think that that's been properly addressed either. Uh, the road improvement, I heard the condition, the three-lane road? Yeah, that's okay. But really, there's a reason why that other, uh, assisted living facility is on, um, Murfreesboro Road. Uh, and, uh, the fourth reason is I think that we need to do a geographical impact study to make sure that this is what needs to be done. So, that's it. Thank you.
Hi there. My name's Melissa Smithson, and I live two miles from the, um, proposed, um, assisted living thing. And I'm opposed to this for several reasons. I'm a 20-year resident there, so I've watched that area grow over the years. Um, my main concern is the infrastructure in the area. That road is still the same road it was when I was a little girl, 40 years ago. It's a rural road. It has been widened at certain points leading up to Murfreesboro Road. Um, but today, as a matter of fact, I was on that road, and an emergency vehicle had to come through. Well, it was coming from the area around Hickory Hollow. He had trouble just with the traffic sitting there today to get through there. So even though you're going to widen that area right there, that road for that, and most of the emergency vehicles can come off Murfreesboro Road, you can't predict where the, they will be at any time. So if another, um, emergency vehicle had to come from a different direction, that's going to impact a lot too. I'm concerned about the blasting. In the 20 years I've been there, there has been blasting in the area. And I'm up on a hill, and I can feel it every day, and it's impacted us in early years. And I feel with it being just two miles down the road, that's going to be a concern too. Um, and just also, you know, with the use of, I very much wish there wasn't assisted living in that area. I have several family members that are 20 miles away in it. I just don't feel like that site is the place to put it. I'm all for having that in our area, but just leave it as it is. It does impact so many different things, and I feel that that property could be used something else. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Mr. White, do you want to use your two minutes?
Mr. Chairman, uh, in rebuttal, I'd like to respond first to all those that are here that are supporting the project. We've asked not to come up and individually address. Would you please raise your hands?
I'd like to come down the, the comments that have been raised here, uh, in the opposition. Uh, one was a water issue. Uh, the water issue has to be addressed, no matter what can be done on the site. Currently on the site, you can do single-family, you can do duplexes. The traffic report indicates there's more traffic would come off the site with the current use than you had with this facility. There's no dispute about that. Public works can confirm that. Our engineer has confirmed that. Again, far less traffic with our proposed use than what can be on, on this road right now. The blasting issue, we've mentioned that whatever takes place on the site, single-family, duplexes, or our use, uh, there's not a mandate for the blasting survey. We have indicated we'd go way beyond whatever the request would be, which is normally just said from the site of the blast as opposed to the boundary of 600 feet. We were asked about noise abatement. That was another issue raised here. You know, you can't have much more innocuous use out here for noise than this nursing and assisted living. Uh, I mean, it, there's just not much argument about that. It's far less intrusive as to noise. Schools, we can't be any less intrusive to the schools than this proposed use. Uh, and with respect to the transition for residential, even the opponents came up and said, "We really do need something like this in this area, but maybe this isn't the exact right spot for it." We respectfully submit that it is. We think that's the conclusion of the bulk of the neighbors that live out there. And with respect to a transition, again, look at the single-family, the nursing, the commercial. I think it's an excellent transition for land use. Uh, we respectfully would appreciate your approval with the conditions as articulated by me and required by the councilman. We'll answer any questions, but thank you for your courtesies.
Thank you. So motion to close the panel, King. Motion to second, close the panel, King. All in favor?
Aye.
Good. Motion carries. We'll, we'll discuss 1A and 1B, but we'll vote on them separately. Jeff?
No questions. I'm going to wait to see what the man says.
Andre?
I don't have any questions right now.
Hunter?
I've got a couple of questions for staff. One, um, the zoning map that you showed, uh, shows the Vale Ridge property, which is The property directly to the right and, and to the, to the right of that, is that also RM15? Or just to the south of Vale Ridge?
You mean this down here?
Yes.
This looks like it's R15.
On the survey, it's called out as RM15, but I wasn't, that's why I was, well, the site plan that, uh, there's a putt overlay.
I might be able to answer that. What, what's the question on the RM15?
Well, uh, directly south of Vale Ridge.
I believe, I'm pretty sure that's R15.
R15, yeah, yeah. Okay, so this is not correct here. Well, I'll be interested in what other commissioners have to say as well. This is a tough one. It's a difficult site. Seems like the applicant has responded the best they could, given the constraints on the site, uh, to both staff's recommendations and the community's concerns. You know, it's a use that, you know, when I live in a assisted living, uh, community someday, I guess, uh, I think I'll want to be in a residential area. You know, I don't know that I want to be out on a strip center, you know, living. Uh, so it seems perhaps like an appropriate way to transition from, uh, from commercial areas to residential areas. So I'm sort of on the fence right now, but.
Let me make a correction. We just looked that up. It is RM15.
The property directly to the, to the east.
I think the issue was the site plan that was presented headed at RM15. I don't think, ours map show it as R15. Uh, the, the one that's in your packet was not prepared by us, but I think it was just a mistake or an oversight on that one.
So we're not sure what's R15 or RM15. It is residential.
Okay. All right, that's all I've got. I think so it's.
Stuart?
I'd like to ask, um, there's been some discussion about the stream, and obviously what, what, uh, the, the proponents want is to have a new street coming across the stream that's not, not a curb cut now on, you know, Antioch. What, what are the concerns the staff would have relative to the stream? I mean, it, you indicated an interest in maintaining it, uh, which is one reason for being against this. this. What are the things that can happen with the development that goes straight across the stream like that? And can it be logically, appropriately, realistically protected if they do that?
I think it's, you know, it's, I think part of it is with having, with requesting the more intense land use policy, the T3 neighborhood evolving, you know, crossing the stream seems to be a result of wanting to do that higher density and trying not to impact the adjacent residential neighborhood. And by going that route, it seems like it might be an environmental impact that you just don't have to, you don't have to make if you keep the existing residential low-medium policy with the two to four dwelling units per acre. With that density, you could have a development on this site that's more in line, more...
Well, if they did, if they were to get approval and do this, are there protections in place as to how they develop relative to the stream and how they protect the stream?
There are. Stormwater has requirements for constructing driveways across stream crossings and preliminarily, they've approved this. They would have to, they'd have to go through all the technical review at final SP.
I guess that I have some concerns. I think in some ways we, the topography does show where this map doesn't. We have another map that kind of shows what... Yeah. It does look like, when you look at these kind of, this map, that it, there really is a divide. And I can see where the staff was thinking, "We don't really want to..." And just because it's physically close to some other more commercial development, that the character is very residential there. On the other hand, there's a good point to be made that assisted living is different than a lot of other institutional uses and should be closer to residential. It works both ways, you know? There's some very fine homes on Hillsborough Road, you know, setback, but close to the services. I guess I'm a little bit undecided about this. And I'm also wondering if we were to approve this, if it wouldn't be better from a planning perspective. And I realize politically, it might not be what the council would do, but a planning perspective, to use the existing stubbed-out street, even though some of the neighbors don't want that. Our job is a planning job, and a lot of people, I'm sure, oppose the rezoning that allowed them to have their houses right there a few years ago. That way you avoid the stream largely and you have an existing street that connects to the major street. Anyway, I'm thinking of going one of three right ways.
Let me ask you, Judy, before we get to you...
Thanks for all that, please.
Yeah, absolutely. Could you put the map up that shows that stream again? Because it doesn't stop the property line. It's got to go on past there.
Yeah.
Where does it go when it comes further south? It doesn't end, I guess.
It does, it does continue farther along Antioch.
Hundred, hundred grand.
But there's already a...
I'm not sure, I'm not...
Isn't there already a street there where the stream would be?
It goes under driveways. It sounds like it's, it goes under the driveways along Antioch.
Can you pull that one back up that showed the blue?
This one?
That's not the width of the stream, that's the width of the stream and the...
That's the width of the buffer, the required buffer.
Right, right, and the buffer.
More like a lake. You know, I've seen assisted living done well, and I've seen it done, in my opinion, not so good. The not so good to me is when it's located in more commercial areas. And I understand the need for access to goods and services. But where I've seen it done well, to me, it seems when it is in more residential, when you have a nice little winding path to get to it, nice trees, places for residents to go, a lot of green space, less concrete around it. And I'm thinking of one in particular where there's not a lot of green space and it's right on a busy highway. I really, you know, this is a difficult, looks to be a difficult piece of land to develop, but it's going to be developed. And right now, the development that could be done on it, I think, would probably have more of an impact than this assisted living. I wouldn't even have a problem with the drive, with the drive being from Oak Barrel rather than coming across the stream, you know, to get to it. I don't, because the traffic impact is not going to be that great with an assisted living as it would be with homes that could be built there, duplexes that could be built there, apartment living, multi-dwelling that could be built there. Let me ask you something, because I didn't hear any opposition regarding the height, although I know that that's one of the reasons that the staff are not seeking approval on this. Is it because with the slopes and everything, the height and with the buffers, it really wouldn't be seen? Is this, and how tall is it?
The SP allows for a maximum height of three stories.
Three stories?
Of this building. And this was a plan that was submitted by the applicant, kind of a conceptual plan showing, showing how the height, how the, how the height, how the SP could result in building form on the site. And this is a section drawing, and this is, these dark lines show the, you know, they kind of denote the property line, and this is the possible height as shown relative to the houses in the residential neighborhood to the south. And this shows kind of the three-story height allowed by the SP with respect, or, you know, in, and shows how it relates to the adjacent single-family neighborhood.
Those are my comments. Thank you.
At this point, I'm 75% comfortable with approving it. But there's some answers I need. For instance, if you'll go back to that map that shows the black and white.
The zoning map?
The zoning map, it's just black and white. Well, that's, that one, that's good, right there.
Okay.
The section of RM 15, it's kind of like the shape of the state of Tennessee. There is a, is this developed at all now?
I think it's in construction phase right now. I don't...
Okay. You see that little wiggle road that goes out there?
This one.
I think I agree with the councilman in this play, in this case, because if you're already building a road across the stream up there, why don't you come in there? And I realize that it'll be more asphalt coming around the...
Commissioner, let me interrupt you. That is not a road, that's a sewer easement.
Okay. The access to, the access to that, the access to that...
How did you know that?
On the property.
Commissioner, and Commissioner, this...
You just shot my theory, that's all.
Yeah, and just to remind, you know, this, this does, this RM 15 area does take access through here to Murphysboro Pike and not to Antioch.
Okay. I understand. All right. But anyway, I do want to add something to commissioners' comments about good and bad. I live right across the street from a assisted living facility, and they are good neighbors. They fit in good, they even invite the people of the neighborhood to come over to activities they've got. So, traffic is almost zilch. So I don't have any problem at all that way. Very frankly, I'm comfortable with it.
Counselor? Under the current zoning, what's the maximum number of trips per day that might be allowed if, I think Ms. Capehart said that originally Oak Barrel Drive was conceived to make a loop around through there? And so what's the, just for conjecture's sake, what's the maximum number of trips per day? If that was developed out under the current zoning, how many trips per day might be allowed through there?
There's a, if you look in your staff report, we put a, we try to put a traffic table in each staff report for zone change that shows what the comparable trips per day would be. And the estimate from Public Works in this traffic table is average daily trips of 458 for single-family residential. And then it has the peak trips, the peak hourly trips to the right of that.
Okay, so I'm looking there, and so they're showing that an assisted living is 526...
And just, and just to be fair, that was done with the original proposal of 100 units, and since, the application has been reduced to 70 dwelling units. So that's, that number will be a little bit high in the staff report than what...
I thought, I thought way high. You know, I've got a couple of assisted living facilities in my district, and I don't think a third of the people who live in them have vehicles, much less driver's license. I, I don't know. I'm, you know, I think that the, with the, with the councilman's comfort level on this and the effort that the developers made to meet all of his requests and concerns, being willing to make the kind of pre-blast surveys that they have agreed to make, I mean, that's way out. We just approved a request the last time we were here, and the pre-blast survey on it was about a third of what they have agreed to do. Seems like that they have gone out of their way to satisfy the community when you look at the support that's here. If you seal that spring up, you might get that lady who's opposing you to get on your side there. I don't know. I do have a concern, the fire marshal's statement on here, is it a requirement to meet emergency access? So I don't know if that's, has to do with elevations and the ability of vehicles to get in. Do you, does anybody know what that concern is?
Which, I'm sorry, which comment are you looking at?
The fire marshal's request or statement, the last, let's see, says the requirements of the Metro Fire Marshal's Office for Emergency Vehicle Access and Adequate Water Supply for Fire Protection must be met prior to the issuance of any building permits.
That's the standard condition put in...
Okay, so there's no...
The fire, the fire marshal did have, did have comments. They had a recommendation. They, they approved it. They approved it with the sprinklered, with sprinklered buildings, and they also wanted to make sure, they noted that no, no grades, no driveway grades would be approved that were greater than 10%.
Right. That's what I was getting at, is that, that's not an issue here with, with what's being proposed?
It isn't an issue, I guess it isn't an issue with the fire marshal for the preliminary plan, but this will all have to be reviewed by the fire marshal at the final SP proposal or application.
And then we have the final stormwater approval that has to be given for the crossing of the stream or whatever...
That's right.
...access has to be made there. You know, I'm, I'm comfortable with, with voting for this, assuming that the, the fire marshal is satisfied and that the stormwater committee gives their final approvals concerning the stream. I think, you know, when this is finished, this will almost provide this area with park-like green space that would be beneficial to the area. I'm, I'm comfortable with it.
I'd like to move approval.
I wanted to ask a couple of questions.
Go ahead, go ahead.
What zoning normally allows assisted living?
Assisted living is permitted in multifamily zoning and in mixed-use and commercial zoning as well.
Okay. And then is there a height restriction on the, in the existing type of zoning? Is a height restriction similar or different from what is proposed?
That's a good question. I can look that up for you. I assume that the, well, I don't, I don't want to assume.
I believe the current height's 35 feet, but in this proposed height...
That's right.
...is three stories.
I'm just looking, I'm just trying to think of an RM district, too. And, yeah, in the, that's right, in a regular R district, it's 35 feet, but in an RM zoning, which would have to, which would be needed to accommodate the assisted living, it would be 20 feet at the setback line, but then there'd be a height, there's normally a height control plane that starts at the front setback.
Okay.
That allows for taller buildings set farther back into the site.
Okay. And then about crossing the stream, is it, I thought I heard you say driving through it, is it, would there be a bridge or would it be put, made as a conduit under a road? I mean, I'm not quite sure which way they, you're talking about having them come through it.
And it, and it just depends on the, it depends on stormwater's requirements based on, I think, the width and the distance between the banks of the stream. It could be, you know, it could be a bridge structure. It could be a stream that's piped with a closed bottom, or it could be a stream that has an open bottom underneath the driveway. There are several options depending on, based on the width of the stream. And at this point, I'm not sure if it's, I'm not sure if the exact solution is...
I just wondered if there's one particular that would address environmental concerns better than another as far as having bad, a negative impact on the stream if you bridge over it completely, if that would help at all? And that's not really our question today, though. I was just curious. I kind of, I mean, I'm torn about this one, too. I agree that you'd rather not live on a major thoroughfare. However, I think part of the reason that the zoning is the way it is for multifamily is as a commercial building in the sense that it has a lot of services. It has staff who come and go every day. They have dumpsters, they have linen delivery services, they have craft food services, and there are commercial vehicles coming in and out. So I assume that's part of the reason the staff doesn't want it in residential, with only a residential road access. And I don't know if that's what noise means, dumpsters being emptied and things like that, but, I mean, we haven't, nobody's brought that up yet. I'm not sure what I think about that, but I think that is, it's, it's supplied as a commercial building as far as the people who work there and the things that come and go. I mean, there are families visiting, so there are cars also, but staff comes twice a day, I presume, or maybe there's shifts, they're coming all the time, in and out. So it seems like it's a commercially-run facility, even though it's for people to live there who aren't in and out driving themselves. It's just one more point to throw in the mix while everybody's thinking about it.
Stuart, you want to comment?
Well, I, I've kind of, as we've been thinking about it until the councilman started talking about sealing the stream, I was getting more comfortable. I've become more comfortable with the idea of the assisted living here because it is the kind of quasi-commercial facility that actually probably does work well and better than most other quasi-commercial facilities in residential. I'm simply not comfortable with, with the access point, and I would be willing to vote for a motion that approved this with the use of the existing access point that's already dealt with the stream one way or the other, the southern part, Oak, what was it?
Oak Barrel.
So that would be my motion, that we approve both of these, but with the understanding that the point of access be the existing road and curb cut and, and spare the rest of the...
Commissioner, if you would, let's get a motion on 1A, which is the community plan, to do that, and then vote on the plan itself.
Well, I guess I'm, I would move we approve the 1A, period.
The community plan?
Right.
Counselor?
Could we add to that, that that's contingent on the approval of the SP?
Oh, yeah, we really, you're... I think so. We're not really...
Well, your motion was to just approve the land use change, the community plan.
It's because we've been told to take two different votes on it, which is probably wrong.
If you don't approve the SP, you could come back and disapprove the plan amendment even today. You could bring it back up.
Yeah.
I would, I'd just like to point out that the staff's report somewhat suggests that this policy could be appropriate for this land. And perhaps it's the actual SP, the proposed site plan, that, that is, I guess, that the staff's not necessarily satisfied with and thus recommending disapproval on both. Is that correct?
The disapproval is for both because, you know, we went through the SP and went through the environmental constraints of the site. And, you know, the thing to remember is that T3 neighborhood evolving, you know, even though the proposal in this case is only for eight dwelling units per acre, T3 neighborhood evolving would allow for up to 20 dwelling units per acre. And with the environmental constraints of the site... And with the environmental constraints of the site, it would have to all be focused basically on that one southeast portion of the site. And I think staff's concern with that and with the SP specifically was that, you know, the RLM policy would allow for development that's more compatible with that residential area and would more likely result in fewer environmental impacts on the site. So fitting that density, fitting the permitted density of RLM policy would be, would be easier to do on the site than fitting in that maximum density allowed with, with T-three neighborhood evolving. And I think you can see that with this site, with this assisted living facility, that trying to accommodate more, twice density of RLM on this site is, is resulting in a somewhat, you know, massive building as compared to the adjacent single-family neighborhood.
So, okay, so while it states that the application of the T-three NE policy could be appropriate where a mixture of the housing types are placed to function together with street and pedestrian connections, which seems like they, they've done to, perhaps to the degree possible on this site considering the neighbors' concerns, it's really the environmental constraints on the site that perhaps make the policy unachievable, or the proposed policy unachievable.
Right, I think, I think that the key thing, even if you had a suburban neighborhood evolving policy, it might very well be appropriate with a mixture of dwelling units if you were at the lower scale there, if you had an SP that was at the lower end of that and took care of the environmental concerns, even if it were assisted living at the lower end. That was, the main concern here is, is obviously the actual development, the way the site's being developed, not the use itself. It's just, it's a very difficult site and I think everybody recognizes it's a difficult site.
And I think what Rick just said, to me, you know, makes me comfortable with the policy on the property, given that the use isn't necessarily inappropriate. Perhaps, you know, then we can discuss the SP separately. So I, I don't know that I necessarily want to tie this particular SP to the, to the policy approval, but I'm, I tend to believe that the policy could be appropriate for this site.
Well, the chair asked that we do vote separately and there is the possibility for going back and revisiting if, if, if we need to, but, but I guess my motion is, on 1A is to simply approve the proposal.
The change from RLM to NE and CO, Secretary.
Counselor. I just, you know, I would like us to honor the councilman's wishes. I mean, he stated that he is, is favorable to having the policy changed, assuming that the SP is approved. But he also stated that he would not be for a change in policy if the SP is not approved. So I would just like us to, to honor and respect the councilman's position. He's the guy that's on the street out there.
I'd just like to, I'd like to point out that that's completely beyond what we're supposed to be doing. That's why we have a council and that's why we have a commission.
Well, we can vote on them together if you'd like and include the SP in the.
We could save a lot of money, but if that was our theory.
And disband.
The motion is to approve the zoning change from RLM to NE and CO.
Second.
And that's got a motion second. Now, we can vote on that separate and then come to the SP and, or you could vote on them together and make, include in your motion that it includes approval, subject to approval of the SP and then vote on them both together. So if you want to change your motion or we vote on them separately?
Separate.
Separately?
Yeah.
Okay. You have a motion to approve the zoning from RLM to NE and CO. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Two opposed, okay. Now I need a motion on 1B, which is to approve the SP.
I have a motion there. I would like to clarify that this is, ultimately, the council's call. It goes to the council. This, this next one. That, so I, I don't dispute that, councilman, in case I was being too harsh there. I'm just saying our recommendation is simply a recommendation to the council. And if it winds up as something he, he doesn't think is right for his district, he, he can, he can either modify it or pull back or whatever. So that's, and so I, just for the purposes of trying to see where we are, my motion on the second part was to approve the actual 1B, but with the understanding that the access point should be Oak Barrel. Is that a proper motion or is that?
I understand the motion is to approve, is approve the petition, application 1B with the staff conditions, with an additional condition that the access be limited to Oak Barrel.
Yeah, that was what I wanted to say.
Okay, got a motion second, so I'm going to clarify that, councilman, under that motion, when it goes before the council, if they don't come through Oak Barrel and make the access on Antioch, it'll require twenty-seven votes, but only twenty-one if it's, comes through Oak Barrel. Is that correct? Okay. You have a motion on the floor to approve with the condition that the traffic comes through Oak Barrel. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry, sure.
Can I speak on it?
Yes.
Commissioner, while I understand the motion, you know, in listening to the arguments and the neighbors, personally, I've been involved in a lot of stream mitigation through previous jobs at Tennessee Department of Transportation, not saying that they're stewards of the environment, but that they address environmental concerns through uses of bigger bridges, box culverts, and they can minimize environmental impact on this. I really feel like the proper entrance is, is not off of the side street. Oak Barrel. So respectfully, I, I disagree with that particular motion and I think that it would, the traffic impacts would be pretty bad for those particular houses on, on that street. Now, I know, probably believe in connectivity, that sort of thing. But in some instances, I think that it's appropriate. And especially, I think, on behalf of the, the neighbors and the, and the councilman's request, that was the original intent of the plan, was to go off of Oak Barrel. But I, I like the idea of, of the, the site plan and the entrance being separate. That's my personal opinion, so I, I'll have to vote against your motion based on, on that and that's, that's where I'm at.
I would offer an amendment to accept the plan as it's presented. I agree with Commissioner Atkins' position. You know, we've got a community that's come in here and said, we support this, we think it's a good thing for this particular site, it provides transition for us to the commercial areas and it's not going to impact our neighborhood by bringing whatever traffic is there through our street. And so if we do what we're, where we're at now, I don't know how that affects that community's support at this point.
So the motion on the floor is to amend the previous motion by deleting the condition that it connect to Oak Barrel. That's the motion you have, is to delete that condition.
Hunter.
I think I would just, I think I'm going to support the amendment, given what Commissioner LeQuire mentioned and the, the commercial nature of the, sort of everyday business and the ongoing, coming and going of commercial vehicles. Is this a, sorry, the, the stream, are there, there are regulations that would protect the stream where it's crossed.
Yes.
On the property. So for those two reasons, I'm going to support the recommended amendment.
Okay, we'll vote on the amendment first. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Show of hands, opposed. Yeah, two opposed. Okay, now we'll vote on the motion to approve the SP.
And that motion is, is filed by the applicant and with the conditions in the staff report. I think there's eight conditions in the staff report.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One opposition. Okay. We're now ready for item five.
Chairman, I have to.
No, no, that's fine.
Not going with that. Okay.
What are you saying, five, or what?
Okay, item five is a request to revise a preliminary plan and for final site plan approval for the north side station plan unit development located at Clarksville Pike. The area to be revised and for final site plan is outlined in red. The overall PUD includes the red area as well as the area outlined in red, in blue. This is located along Clarksville Pike. As you see, just off the screen, below is White's Creek, the Kroger, this is a Kroger business right in the front, public library, Nashville Public Library, just at the front along Clarksville Pike. I want to point out that this is not a rezoning or a new PUD, but is a revision to the PUD that has already been approved by council. Staff is recommending approval with conditions. This is another picture of the site, currently is vacant. The current zoning is RM fifteen and would permit, without the overlay, would permit a density of approximately, or fifteen units per acre. This PUD was originally approved in nineteen eighty-seven. It was approved for one hundred ninety thousand square feet of commercial uses. It was the last amended, or last amended in two thousand seven for sixty-six residential units. This is the plan that was approved by council in two thousand seven for sixty-six multifamily units. Access is to Clarksville Pike through the Kroger parking lot. During that time, Public Works and the fire marshal had some issues with, with access regarding basically how their, a fire truck or a dump truck, or not a dump truck, a garbage truck, could turn around along these dead-end streets that are in yellow. To accommodate that access issue, council provided conditions permitting changes to the plan in the enacting ordinance, which permitted the changes to that preliminary plan to address these issues as long as the overall concept of the plan and there is no increase in the density of the development. This is the proposed plan, which proposes the exact same number that was approved by council, sixty-six multifamily units. The streets have been revised and the layout has been changed to address those issues with access, so they're no longer any dead-end streets. There are three types of units, which is consistent with what was there before. You have eight, several, fifty detached, eight detached and eight duplex-type units. There's a buffer yard, a C-class, a B-class buffer yard, it's twenty feet wide along property boundaries with the single-family residence. This is another view of the site. And this is looking from the site towards Clarksville Pike and this is the private drive that will be used to access to Clarksville Pike. In conclusion, staff is recommending approval with conditions. And that includes Public Works conditions that are in the staff report and updated stormwater conditions that are at your desk. The plan is, addresses concerns with the previous plan. The plan is consistent with the council ordinance, the plan provides a variety of housing options and the plan creates a walkable community with its close proximity to grocery as well as public transit. Thank you.
Thank you. Item's open for public hearing, the applicant will be allowed ten minutes. You have been reserved two.
We would like to reserve two minutes just in case. I like the new light system here, it's, it's nice. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I am David Kleinfeldter, four twenty-four Church Street, Suite seventeen fifty. Also with me today is Tim Turner, the engineer, and Mr. Paul Widman, who's with the company that intends to build these homes. Could we put the, Jason, the site up, just so we have that? I know Tim will be speaking to the, the new, the new plan, the current one.
You want the site or the plan?
The current site plan, I mean, the, the proposed site plan.
You're good.
That one. Yes. Okay, as, as Jason noted, I really don't have to hold too much to add to what he said because he's said a lot of stuff I was going to. Your staff report may still show this as disapproval, that was due to some stormwater review timing issues. They did get the recommendations from stormwater and that has been, that's been completed and all the conditions are going to be complied with and included in staff, in the recommendation. The council did adopt this in two thousand seven and that was an amendment to the eighty-seven PUD, because as he said, it used to be all commercial. So in eight, in two thousand seven came in with the new PUD and for these sixty-six homes, and that's exactly what's still there today, are being proposed. When this was approved by this commission in two thousand seven, it first of all was approved on your consent agenda and then council member Gilmore came in and told the commission that there was, and I quote from your minutes, overwhelming support of the community for the development. It was approved on your consent agenda, as I said. Property does have an approved PUD. Normally, a developer can get a final PUD plan without having to come to you, just get administrative. In this case, because of the special condition that was in there, you kind of have a unique plan, that, that plan could not be approved as a final PUD because it specifically had a council condition that said, no, you can't do these dead ends, dead ends that were in there. So the applicant was required to come back and ask for revision to fix those. And that's essentially what this layout does, it fixes those requirements. Doesn't change the, the number of units. It was, as he said, multifamily before, it's multifamily now. Some of the units are attached, you know, it increases energy efficiency, we think, and Tim will address the layout a little bit more, but you know, the unit's back to Kroger or the single-family or next to the single-family. There's no more duplexes, no fewer duplexes than previously. So this is only a request to revise a layout, it's not a request for new development or anything of that nature. Everything is consistent. The property does not include any floodplain whatsoever, it doesn't even directly abut floodplain, it's about six hundred feet from the nearest floodplain. I believe the staff report puts it best, and it's a quote, "There are no issues with disposal." We ask you vote to approve the staff recommendation and approve the PUD revision and the final site, site plan. There was a request from the council member who I spoke with, by the way, of course, right maybe the day the application was filed, to make sure he understood it had been filed. But the applicant's very happy to meet with the community, we would ask that you go ahead and approve it however, but you can meet with him as, as a good neighbor and talk about what they've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Turner with T-Square Engineering, we're the civil engineers on the site, on the project. First thing we did when we got involved with this project was to get the staff's comments from the previously approved plans and address the concerns that Public Works had and the fire marshal. They had, actually, the fire marshal had disapproval in his comments and the Public Works had several concerns, as Jason brought up. So I called Scott McCormick at Public Works and scheduled a meeting with him to, to discuss his concerns. Through that meeting, he said that the main things that he had problems were with the dead-end streets, which Jason brought up. He also said the widths of the streets that were going through the site were not, were not proper distances for ninety-degree parking spaces. There were not enough parking spaces on that plan to their requirements. Also, they, there were not enough dumpsters, that was another comment that they had. And also, the access ingress, egress easement that we have out to Clarksville Pike, they wanted to see some striping to delineate the lanes going out to the intersection. So from that meeting, we, I told Scott that we would revise our plan, or revise our preliminary to meet those needs. And I told him that once we got that preliminary done, we would come back to him and let him look at our revised plan. We did that, we revised our plan, same number of units. We actually, we moved all of our, we moved all of our townhouses to the center of the property, whereas the previous approval had the townhouses on the east side of the property against the residential, where now we have all of our single-family homes on the exterior of the property and the townhouses in the center. So anyway, we had our meeting with Public Works, they, they looked at the plan, they really liked what we. They looked at the plan. They really liked what we did. They liked the flow of the traffic. They liked the fact there's no dead ends now. He also asked if we would, even though these are private streets, he asked if we would make the streets to public road standards. So we said we would do that. Now we have 24-foot wide streets with curb and gutter, with sidewalks. We've got the proper number of dumpsters that they needed, the number of parking spaces that they required. So when we left the meeting, Scott was ecstatic. I mean, he really liked the plan. So then we went to the Fire Marshal, called the Fire Marshal up, took the plan to him. He, he really liked the plan. Actually, I've got, they're a stamped approved plan from the Fire Marshal right now. So we've addressed Public Works concerns and we've addressed the Fire Marshal's concerns, which those were the two agencies that had, that had the biggest problems with the previous approved plan. We've also been working with Metro Stormwater. We've addressed all their comments. One of their concerns in the previously approval was handling the on-site, handling the water quality on-site. Well, we are taking care of all the water quality through a water quality structure, which in turn goes into a detention pond on-site, and then it goes into the regional pond adjacent to our property. So not only are we handling all the water quality issues that the stormwater requires, we're handling the water quantity. We're actually reducing the flow from the pre-existing flow, we're reducing the post-flow on all storms 2 through 100-year. So we're taking care of water quality and we're taking care of water quantity. We're also dealing with Metro Water and Sewer. We're providing an 8-inch water main through the site and also an 8-inch gravity sewer. So with that, all that said, we feel like this is going to be a good project and we've dealt with all the concerns with the agencies. Thank you.
Mr. Widman can go on the two-minute reserve, because we still, we only have two and a half, right? He'll go on, still 10 minutes after the opponent.
Yeah, thank you. Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Chris Utley. I'm with the North West Secret Association. We know this has been, this has actually started back in 2007, and it was approved by the council person at that time. But unfortunately, the neighbors didn't know then, just like we didn't know at this time was coming up. I talked to our councilman last week and he said, somebody might be wanting to build something behind Kroger's. That's a different thing as if somebody is already in the process of building behind Kroger's. The neighborhood did not know then, and we just now find that out a week ago today, actually. I talked to someone from their group. He said, "We'd like to come to your meeting and tell you about what we're going to do." But they never mentioned they were having a hearing tonight to me. But I found out, because I did my homework. And to build something, I understand that people need to live in places. But to build around where the city just got them paying millions of dollars to buy back houses that were flooded in the area, we have a problem with water out there. And Kroger's would not be here to this day if that pond in the back wasn't there to absorb all that land, all the water that came through. Now, we have some things, some issues that we are concerned about, traffic. When you go to build something like that, you've got dump trucks. If you pull the picture up and show the street back there, it's a very small street. And two dump trucks can't pass between each other back there. But you're going to have to bring massive amount of stuff, dump trucks, cement trucks, things of those natures. What I, what I'm saying is, the neighborhood has some concerns and they really need to be addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? See none. We've got two minutes for, we've got, let him have his rebuttal time.
Two minutes, I'll only take 10 seconds. It is not in the floodplain. And the access, all access for construction will be through that private driveway you saw, which is an access easement across the Kroger front property. And then Mr. Widman has a few pictures and he can answer any questions.
Be very brief. My name is Paul Widman. I'm the developer, 2031 River Road in Louisville, Kentucky. I won't go over things that have already been said, but basically, the development consists of 50 townhomes, eight duplexes and eight cottages. This development will bring more than $8 million worth of total development cost to this neighborhood. We typically hire local subcontractors. The majority of our subcontractors are local. And it will, the, the construction of this project will, will create more than 100 jobs over the next year and a half. We designed this with families in mind. As you can see, there's a large open space that the townhomes kind of surround. We've actually been talking about, are we going to face the townhomes toward the open space or toward the parking lot? And we haven't made that decision yet. I could argue it round or square, but you know, I have a six-year-old and a nine-year-old that like to go outside and play while we're cooking dinner or whatever, and you know, it's perfectly well set up for that, where a normal apartment complex or something like that wouldn't be. It's great to have a place for your kids to go out and play. I have some pictures of a similar development that we finished last year. These are the exact plans for the townhomes that we'll be building, and I'll pass those out. And I'll finish by saying, I talked to the, to the mayor, these were actually built in Fairview, the mayor of Fairview, and she said, quote, "This project has been an asset to our community housing needs." Thank you.
Thank you. Judy, you had a motion? Motion seconded, closed, the panel, in your own favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now, Judy.
Thank you. Thank you for starting with me. I've been on this commission for 11 years, and so I was here in 2007 when this was approved. And I was excited about the approval at that time. This is a community that is in desperate need of having rooftops. It's a community that needs to be developed, that needs more goods and services out there. And one of the reasons that we hear often why we don't have, it does not have those goods and services, is because there is not enough rooftops. I'm excited about this particular development. Can you pass the pictures around that he, that he hangs there coming? About this development, glad to see how things have been rearranged. I just have a couple of comments. You've met with all of the powers that be with Metro and all of that is admirable. I'd like to see you meet with the community. The community needs to have input, what it looks like, even the internal. Now, I'm talking about design, material, quality, what the buffer will look like. I'm glad that you are considering facing the homes toward the open space. I think that makes more sense if you're trying to create neighborhoods, encourage walking, encourage activity, exercise. This does come right onto Clarksville Highway. There's a bus line there for people to get to work. I know that in the construction phase, there, yes, there are going to be, you know, however long this is going to take, there's going to be construction equipment, trucks, all of that. But anytime anything is built in Nashville, the surrounding community, you know, has to put up with that for the construction phase. But the one thing about this, everything is going into a private drive. It's not in the floodplain. We can't build in floodplains. So I'm excited about this development, and if the quality is anything like these pictures, I think that it's going to add to that, to the value of that whole community out there. I'll reserve my comments after my colleagues have spoken.
Thank you. Phil?
I thought those were good comments already. I think if you compare this plan with the previous plan, this is a world of difference. And that's what I'm going on. I think that the developer has really done good. There's one question I have for staff. There was a letter on our desk, and this is to Mr. Turner, and it lists, there's these 10 corrections that have to be made. Where do we stand on those items?
Those are actually from the previous comments. They haven't, they don't have updated comments as of this morning. So they have recommended approval, because all the comments basically will not require changes to the plan. They're more construction-oriented flows and, you know, things that we don't really look at as a, as a planning commission. So, but it's not anything that would require them to go out and, you know, if they had to upsize the detention pond, which could require that the roadway changed significantly, it's not anything like that. So because of that, they've recommended that we can approve it with conditions.
Thank you very much.
Gelsman?
I just think that the institutional nature of the outline of the approved plan is certainly improved upon worlds with the kind of neighbor-friendly design of the second one. I think it's a good thing. The only comment, I mean, I'm going to vote for this, but the only comment I have is to the developer, is that if we pass this, we are doing so in good faith, that you're going to meet with the community, satisfy the council and the neighbors with their concerns, apparently that they haven't had a chance to voice to you at this point.
Andre?
I agree with the question about meeting with the neighbors. Is there, was there no notice, or what is our standard to notice for this type of decision?
There's, notices don't go out for revisions to preliminaries. So the last notice that went out was in 2007 for the plan amendment. So there would have been a notice for the planning commission meeting as well as the council hearing.
Okay, so nothing, we were following our normal protocol as far as whether we offer notice or not, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then I'm just listening again to comments. Did, can you show us the aerial photo site? I mean, the aerial photo, please. Did, did this area flood during the 2010 flood? What's outlined there?
Have some slides here that shows floodplain and the area. So this slide shows the floodplain, local studies as well as the FEMA. So the, the yellow orange is, is the local, so that was actually studied. So that's why it falls outside of the federal. The, the red is the areas that were actually flooded, where the water came out to during the flood a couple of years ago. And then here's some, some views of the water.
Thanks, that's helpful. Yeah, I would just encourage the councilmen and the developers to get together with the community, please.
Just real briefly, it looks, looks like a better plan. It looks more livable, it looks more modern. But I'm with all the other commissioners, especially Commissioner Cummings, that, you know, it's really important to seek advice and help from the community. It'll only make the development better. It will help you sell the units better, and it will make the neighbors happy. So I think it's a win-win. And, and we're leaving, that's just, like everybody said, in good faith. So, Mr. Kleinfeldter, I know that you know what I'm talking about. Okay.
I won't be able to verify you again.
Yeah. Well, I'll vote against your statement.
Hunter?
I'll move approval of the revised PUD with the staff conditions.
Second.
Got a motion seconded, approved, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Hunter, you have anything from the historic commission?
I don't have a report, and I haven't had a report over the last several months, and I want to make sure all the commissioners understood why. I think that, I know the historic commissioners realize, but I've had to miss all of the historic commission meetings over the last few months because of leadership middle Tennessee, which happens to fall insane. That'll be over in May, so I'll be back to my regular duties there. Thanks.
If you would, at that time, maybe report, not month by month, but just how many houses are being approved and kind of locate the areas of town.
Sure, and I can get a report from staff as well.
Anything from Parks, Mr. Phil?
Yes, we met a couple of days ago, and there were only two items of business that were approved. Both of those were concerned with long-term agreements with soccer organizations in Metro. That's it.
What's the latest on the Nashville?
Gone away for now. I could predict something, but I won't.
Okay. Executive Committee, we will be scheduling a executive committee meeting for Wednesday, the 29th at 8:30 a.m., and the staff will duly notify the public in time for that. And we'll get to you. Phil, do you have anything for the council?
I just, at our meeting Tuesday night, the council approved to move ahead with monthly public hearings. The first one of those will begin that cycle in June, and the new schedule has been released. In fact, you've got it on your desk there. So that's the main thing from our last meeting. And I'd like to congratulate Mr. Johnson on his recent accomplishment, his certification. Good job.
Okay, Rick?
Okay, I was to cover a couple of things. Greg's completion of the AICP certification, we appreciate that. And even though the monthly meetings don't start till June, actually, there will be a set in March as scheduled. There will not be one in April, but there will be one in May, in June. So between now and June, there's only one month that there will not be a set of public hearings, and that won't be going on. I'd like to have the commission forward to the Parks Commission, a censor for stealing Rebecca Rats from the Planning Department. Tomorrow's Rebecca's last, last day, and she was stolen by the Parks Department. So. But she'll be doing, we appreciate the work that she's done, and she's going to be doing the same kind of design work plus project management. So it's, it's, we're, we're happy for her. Not necessarily happy for us, but happy for her. Another item that passed council was the incomplete infrastructure bill. That did pass, and we're continuing to work on the 11 remaining cases that are out there. We believe five of those remaining cases are probably going to be solved, and the other six of those cases, the vast majority of the infrastructure work will wind up being done by a development entity. We may, I anticipate that if there's anything, it'll be just some small gap financing that we work to leverage that development. One other item I want to bring up, and you may have read about it, is the bankruptcy of Tennessee Commerce Bank. That, there's, we've, we've got, Tennessee Commerce Bank, we're holding four letters of credit, five, four letters of credit from Tennessee Commerce Bank. We've been in contact with them. They've been taken over by a bank from Kentucky, I believe it is, Bob. And we've been in contact and we're re-verifying that those letters of credit are still valid, and we're going to be getting information from them to ensure that they're valid. They've given all that, every indication that they're still honoring those letters of credit, but we want that in writing. If not, if we can't get that, then we'll require the developer to get an alternative form of security on that. But.
What's the amount on those total?
Total is about $800,000 roughly, is kind of where we're at on, on that. Couple of other things we did, Craig participated with the police department's community meeting for the neighborhood associations in West Precinct and had a good, good meeting there. We are working on the budget. I don't, there'll be some, obviously some hits on that, but I don't see significant issues. We've got some areas in there in Rebecca's position. If we fill that back at a planer one, that'll give us some little funds there and stuff like that. Working on some other situations there. However, we are working to try to recover some of the costs on our provisions of GIS services. As you know, we provide a widespread amount of GIS service for other departments in the, in the county or in Metro. And, for example, we just prepared a complete application for the Election Commission that allow, a mapping application that allows, if you go to our website and you're interested in any district you're in, you can put. in any district you're in, you can put your number, your address in, and it'll tell you what school district, what council district, what state rep district, what senate district, all, everything from that there. And they're going to contribute twenty-five hundred dollars back to our mapping fund, which goes to pay for the cost of those services and software and that type of thing. We're also working, and y'all may or may not be aware of this, we provide an awful lot of expert testimony for the District Attorney's Drug Task Force. We prepare maps and testify in court as to the distance on an arrest and whether the proximity to a school and all of that. Last year, we produced almost five hundred maps for them. We answered twenty-nine subpoenas. We've testified in court on that, and they've been willing to be kind of billed as an expert service for that, and that'll go again into the mapping fund, but it'll, it'll help cover some of that. ULI Nashville on, I think it's March seventh, maybe March eighth, regardless, we're hosting, is hosting Sadhu Johnson, who is a, he's going to be a keynote speaker on the issue of sustainability. I think the morning program's the eighth, I think it's on the eighth, but sustainability and engine for economic development. Why should we build it, and why do we care? He has offered to have lunch with the Planning Commission and talk about issues of sustainability. We'll be getting that information out to you. It will be a lunch, and we'll be available. It's a great opportunity. He's done significant work over his career in Vancouver, British Columbia, and elsewhere. And I would strongly encourage you, if you can do that, that'll be on the eighth, and it'll be at lunch.
Is that the same day as the?
It's the same day as the ULI. Oh, it's the same day as the commission meeting, correct. Yes, right. We're on our sixth report, and next-to-last report, two more reports under our consent decree with the Department of Justice. As you recall, the council got us into this, and Brenda loves doing those, but she would prefer to do other things with her time. So we have two more.
I sat through my training, Rick, from that.
Yes, we've, we've had, we've been pretty good. Even all the new council members except, I think, one, and he had training as a BZA member, right? So he qualifies. Okay, all right. Yesterday, had an opportunity to go up to Washington and participate in a local leaders coalition brainstorming session with Smart Growth America. They're really changing a lot of the focus on the efforts of smart growth. They've, I think there's been some realization that most of the ideas are not going to come from the federal or the state government, but they're going to come, as they call it, trickling up from local governments. And so I was able to participate with about twenty other local officials. Most of them elected, a few appointed officials in terms of looking at what services could Smart Growth America provide locally, and how could, how could the coalition kind of work to broaden awareness of sustainability and smart growth issues? So that was a very productive meeting, and even though Washington was very cold, but it was still very nice. It was cold and wet, but, but the meeting was very productive. Regarding community planning, we had a very successful meetings, I guess it was last week, on the Midtown Plan. We had over ninety people in attendance going over that. I think there was a lot of excitement about that. MTA had a staff member there to talk about the Broadway West End corridor. We're receiving comments, and we will be having a work session on February twenty-third to go through the Midtown comments. We're trying to make sure that the Midtown Plan is completely up to date and completely reflects the development priorities in that corridor as we move forward with the Bus Rapid Transit application to the federal government. And we're trying to be proactive in that regard. And we have begun, so there will be a workshop on the twenty-third at two-thirty that'll be prior to your next meeting, that we'll talk about that. And we're beginning the anti-act plan update. We've done an awful lot of work on that so far. A lot of the staff will be out tomorrow in the field, working out there. But we also have done a lot of preliminary work on social media in preparing for that information, preparing for the plan process. And I guess last but not least, the ortho vendor contract is under contract and will be flying orthos finally, and I guess the, should I say, is, I guess the, have they awarded the contract on the fairgrounds plans, I think? Yeah?
Oh, yes. The letter, the letter went out today to award the contracts.
So the plans for the fairgrounds, the highest and best use and the ideal fairground design will be out. So there's two, those are two contracts that Ann is coordinating for the, for Metro in terms of that. I think that's all I've got on here.
Any other comments, any commissioners? Stand and go.
Thank you.